Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, April 10th, 2006. This evening, City Council will be meeting in a series of committee meetings, starting with Communications, Arts and Recreation, City Services and Environment, Finance and Personnel, and Transportation, along nine. First, Communications Committee. Our Communications Chair is Plutinka Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to report on the conversation with Council that occurred tonight. We had about 20 people. It was a lively discussion. We had representatives of people who were interested in biking, pedestrian transportation, buses to some of the social servency agencies, social service agencies, and also Ohio University. So it was a lively discussion, and I'll have minutes up probably by the weekend on the city's website. But Carol, do you want to say something about the conversation tonight?
Just that I was very pleased with the number of groups that were represented and the number of people there, and I think that it clearly showed that we need to continue some public discussions and hope that many of those folks will be able to attend on May 4th, the presentation of the consultant in this room at 9:30 in the morning. And then, following that event, we will plan another public meeting for people to have input on their presented plans and where do we go from there. Thank you.
And I just would like to announce the next conversation, which is going to be two weeks from today. And I'm not sure of the date, actually. Today is the 10th, so would that be the 24th, 6:00 PM? And the topic is going to be city communication. What we'll be talking about is maybe what folks would like to see on the city website, and what folks might like to see in terms of programming on the government channel. And given staffing, of course, we can't promise that we can deliver all these things, but it is a discussion because we will have a plan brought forth about what kind of program we would like to see, so we're inviting input from citizens on what kinds of informations they'd like that kind of access to. So that's it, two weeks from now. Conversation with Council. And any miscellaneous from Communications Committee members? All right, so Communications Committee is adjourned.
The Arts and Recreation Committee, the main topic, or perhaps the only topic, is Stroud's Run this evening, and so we'll begin with the presentation and public comments, and then we'll talk about what we need to do as a council for consideration of this issue. So we'll start with the mayor.
Thank you, Carol. I think I dropped off in everybody's Council's mailboxes a rather large packet of information that's been gathered by the Stroud's Run Committee, both prior to its initial report, but a lot of things that were done after that. I think the main points that I would want to address tonight are the things that you had in your resolution of December. Rather than go into each item individually that if Council members wish to, we of course have a map of Stroud's Run back here, the mission statement, and most of the advisory committee is here, plus two representatives from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources are here in case you have any questions with respect to the agreements with a number of different sub-agencies of the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, along with a core agreement with the state for the actual transfer of property. We also have supposed contract or proposed contract with the Division of Wildlife, who would still be managing the wildlife in the area, advising us, but also helping us post the areas for hunting, make sure licensed hunters are using the park, and other assistance in those areas. The Division of Watercraft does not have separate individual agreements, but has a statement of their mission and purpose. But for example, probably one of the closer ones to us is the City of Jackson has a reservoir type system, a lake, and they have an agreement with both of those departments or divisions to help them manage their park. I think that the task that you set before us was, number one, to better define what the agreement would be with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and that is contained in your packet. I think the main things that will over in that is that in the beginning, page two of that agreement, after a lot of nice wherethes, it really says that the state would transfer to the City of Athens, Stroud's Run State Park elsewhere than it screws the dam. The reasoning that that was in our original recommendation to exclude the dam is that there is some degree of damage as we would have with any dam that's over 50 years old. There are some erosion, et cetera, on that, and that it is on the list of dams that are maintained by ODNR now, and it will continue to be under the terms of this agreement. There's a provision in there that if whatever eat, meet, or exceed then current state standards, it could then be transferred to the city, but it's the feeling of the committee that since it's a dam that's over 50 years old, it almost has to be entirely rebuilt to get to current standards because of the passage of time, as much as anything else, but it is there as a possibility. The other thing is an out provision that Chief West and I both agreed to was that even though the transfer would occur, either party could have a year in which they could find out in that first year, and oops, this isn't exactly what we thought from the city's standpoint, or it's more than we want to take on, et cetera. We had to have the right to have that revert back to the state of Ohio. Same thing is incumbent upon the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, if their mission and charter, to have that same viewpoint of it, because they could say, wait a minute, city, you're not exactly doing what we thought you would be doing. It's not the, you know, we're going to say, comment from the public that it's not, your stewardship is not as good as what we had anticipated. So I think it's natural to have an out on something of this magnitude by both parties at the beginning. It also spells out in there that the city cannot lease or sell off any of Stroud's Run State Park to another entity. We can only give it back to the state of Ohio. And I think that's something, because we want to preserve that area as a park, that that's acceptable and really very necessary for us. There are a number of other little provisions in there, such as the equipment that would be transferred to the city, that we would still offer the recreational opportunities to the general public that traditionally with this type of park that the Ohio Department of Natural Resources would, which would include fishing and boating, hiking trails, the things that are out there, you know, today. And then they have a list of equipment that are there, and then we have an open aspect of additional conditions that either party can come up with. The way, the reason that we left this blank at this stage in the document is, one, we had a public meeting Thursday night, the advisory committee did, and there were some suggestions in there that we put in the agreement, some restriction that, for example, that we, the city would not permit commercial logging within the park. There might be other things that the state would want to put in there, too, as we get to the final year, and there may be items that members of Council may think of that they wish to have. So I kind of left that as a little bit of an open paragraph there. So that would, you know, give you those agreements that would be, and tie down what the state and the city would be agreeing to. The other item that was, I think, foremost in what Council had done was to try to solidify more of the funding aspects of it. And what was done first in that was that we looked and said, okay, we think Council really wants a five-year financial plan, and that that financial plan should have the operating expenses, but what we believed to be at this time, any capital expenses that are there. We have a caveat in there that's not in the budget, is that there are various grants that the Ohio Department of Natural Resources offers to municipalities and counties for park districts, and for city-owned municipal parks, which this would be, that they don't have, like the Division of Watercraft has grant funds available to improve dock areas. So that would be something we would be eligible to do, they have to fight, or argue, I guess, present their case. Of all the state parks, there's only so much available for them for park improvements, so I have Stroud's Run for this case against all the others, whereas here it's a different pool of money, it's a different competition area, and potentially our opportunity would be greater than the management, current management of Stroud's Run State Park. The other thing we looked at that in the budget would be timing aspects. One, don't start out quite so ambitiously, that we have staff at the community center and Parks and Recreation, we have people that man the front desk, we have a lot of assets there that we can use. We do not necessarily, at the beginning, believe we need a full-time employee. We think that's a goal we should get to, and it's in the five-year plan, but it doesn't start out that way. It starts out with part-time employees, which lowers the cost to the budgets. There have been various numbers in newspapers lately, but we're thinking first-year operation in the $115,000 to $120,000 range, but it would eventually get up to the $150,000 to $170,000 range. Now, remember, this is under a certain concept of operation of the park, that we're not doing a lot of capital improvements to it, we're not expanding recreational opportunities at city expense. It leaves it open that we have grants that potentially there, and also leaves it open to many of the organizations, what I like to call the stakeholders in the park, such as the Athens Bicycle Club, or the Horsemen's Association, Bondo Club, others that use the park now, have already been cooperatively working to improve some of the trails and facilities there, to continue in that capacity, and it's really as much as their membership and their desires are as to how far that would be. So it's really not something I build into a budget, but it's something that we encourage at all times. In the budgeting there, we also were looking at tying down money. And of course, the first large one is from the department itself, they would give $49,500 for whatever needs that the city would have, as long as it was for Stroud's Run State Park. That would be in the first year. We also, as you go through your packet, and I think one letter came in a little later today, and I put it as a separate copy, we have received commitments from the College of Health and Human Services for $10,000 per year for five years. We have received a commitment from Campus Recreation for $5,000 per year for five years. We have received a commitment from the Dean of the College of Fine Arts for $10,000 per year for five years. So that ties down an additional $25,000 of funding for five years. In addition to that, we are still pursuing with the administration of Ohio University to do a matching amount to what the deans and academic departments have put up. I have not got a yes or no on that, because I wish to finalize things at the departmental and the dean's level before I had a final conversation with the administration. Also in your packet was a copy of a letter that I've sent out to some various foundations, and we have a list of foundations yet to go to, but we sent letters to the Raymond Cook Foundation, which is dedicated only to Athens County. We sent a letter to the AEP Foundation, sent a letter to the Nelsonville Osteopathic Heritage Foundation, and we have compiled a list of other foundations that we would be wanting to see if they would be major donors to the park. In addition to that, we are, started to gather up a list of local businesses or civic organizations to see what I would call sponsorships of items at Stroud's Run. The third level of funding that we're looking for is the friends of Stroud's Run, or individuals would be able to make a contribution of 10, 20, 100, whatever they would wish to make. It would be probably an annual fundraising drive, these would all go into endowment funds. If you look closely at your budget, you see a $24,000 revenue item in year five. What that means is that the endowment would have grown to almost $500,000 by that time, and that would be the contribution that would start coming in. This is a yes, because it depends upon how good we are on the fundraising. The important part to note is the commitment toward fundraising, that that's there. Also, there was some questions with respect by Council and in this ordinance, although they didn't give us any money to do it, so some of the committee members took it apart themselves to make some preliminary Stroud's Run State Park Management Plan outline, which is also, I think, about a three-page document along with a table of contents that was put in there, and the people that prepared that are here tonight, if you wish them to go into it in any more depth, or just to get what their thinking was. I could probably talk about Stroud's Run another hour without any trouble, but I won't, because I know I've got a lot of the number of members of the advisory committee here, and also the potential for some of the Council members to have any questions that they might have. I'll just sort of end the presentation at that.
I'd like to, at this time, ask if there's anyone from the task force or the ODNR folks that would like to comment at this time.
Do you want to answer your question?
I have a question.
We need you to come up to the podium, if you would.
Just any input. You don't have to.
No one wants to put on the spot, does it?
Just come up and give your name and what your affiliation is, and say what you'd like to say.
Okay, my name is Edward Frank, I'm with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Division of Parks and Recreation. I work in our central office, I'm the Planning Section Manager, and we feel that this is an excellent opportunity to improve this resource and to keep this resource pretty much the way the folks here in Strouds have pretty much managed it this entire time. We are changing the way we manage facilities. We are, used to be upon a time that we had a park manager in every park, not so distant. I've been a park manager for 17 years, and I got out of it three years ago, moved to Columbus, and at that time, there was almost a park manager in every park. Now there's 25 or so parks that have management teams in them, I think there's 25 or 26 management teams, we call them regions, and we manage those parks within that region basically as a unit, so whereas Stroud's Run used to be run as a park, it's now run as part of a three-park region, Forkett Run, Baroque, and Stroud's Run. Honestly, our resources go where the most people go, and where the best use of those resources can be applied. And so some of your smaller parks, or some of the parks that are a little bit distant from some of our resources, such as lodges or large marinas, have a tendency to have less support than what some of the larger parks, the salt ports, the Deer Creeks, the Allen Creeks, want that they get. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so you are in general in charge of most of the parks in the state, is that what I'm hearing?
I'm the Planning Section Manager.
Planning Section Manager.
Yeah, I'm in charge of me.
Okay.
I'm the entire Planning Section.
Good job. Okay, I guess the reason why, the question I have is, right now, the scenario out here with lots of what happens to Stroud's Run if we don't figure it out. What do you, as a planning manager, what do you envision what happens to Stroud's Run? The scenarios I hear is everything from logged out and mined, strip mined, to mountaintop removal, and, or just a slow deterioration? I mean, these are the extremes here.
Realistically, I deal almost exclusively with, I'm the guy that makes parks, I make the bathrooms, I make the cabins, the lodges. Right now, we have a lot of infrastructure that is basically deferred maintenance. If we doubled our capital program, it wouldn't touch the deferred maintenance that we have throughout the Division of Parks and Recreation. And realistically, we have very few resources to spread out, and our capital budgets over the last few bienniums have been shrinking. So the sort of things that you would see happening at Stroud's Run that I can specifically identify would be shelter houses would go unroofed, parks would, bathrooms would just fall apart, ramps would deteriorate, docks would not be taken care of as well. The facts of life are, there's very few capital dollars to spread around, and those capital dollars are going to the regions to do with, within the regions as they see fit. Not trying to evade your question, I just, I can't tell you what the future is going to be. I can't tell you what the next capital budget's going to be.
So really, you're saying it'd be, your scenario would be a slow decline in the quality of the park?
We would try to maintain the park pretty much the way it is today, and it's my belief that that's less than it was 10 years ago. I know 10 years ago, there were, I believe, I read in the newspaper article today, I think there were three park rangers there, there was a park manager there, they probably at one time had a natural staff that would go through the park, they probably had camp ground attendants, and that's just not happening.
Conceptually, if it got too bad, would you actually, the other scenario is closing the park entirely, is that a scenario that exists within your planning?
I would not think that we would close the park. What we might do is, we might turn larger and larger areas into wildlife diversity areas. Recreation would become much more passive.
Okay. I see the spreadsheet, I assume you've seen the copy of it there, has you committed for, was it $49,000 for the first year?
$49,000, yes, sir.
And there's subsequent years as well, is that?
No, sir. It's a one-time.
So it doesn't hurt you to pass it to us, at least for the time being, because your budget right now is wide on the place?
It's, it's not a money issue with us. It is an opportunity to make a better use of the resource.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else have questions at this point?
Yes, sir.
Several of us read in the newspaper. You know, I'm trying to figure out exactly what the option would be if we do nothing. And I do know that there were a couple of newspaper articles a month or so ago, talking about possibly selling off timber in some of the state parks.
There was a, I believe it was a House Bill that was introduced to do that, everything there.
And that could be a possibility if the city does not take this on?
I do not believe it's gone any further, I think it's still in committee. If it goes out of committee and goes up on the floor?
I didn't hear anything mentioned about gas drilling when we put it, but gas drilling if we take it over, or?
That's another clause we could put in there, sure. I mean, or it's just could be a statement of our policy.
I don't have it in.
I don't know what the advantage to put into the agreement is, just from the standpoint that the only penalty is returning it over to the state. If they already adopted that policy under another scenario, that doesn't do us any good. I mean, what boils down to is, as a matter of public policy by future mayors and future councils, would you or would you not do that? And we can't answer for those future councils or future mayors. You would strongly advise against it, but I don't know what's going to happen in 30 or 40 or 50 years, and I'm not sure if I know a, to tie it up, you know, we can make that as a statement, but as you know, legislation can change other legislation.
Sure.
But going farther back with Bill's question, I think you said something in a newspaper interview recently, that we weren't sure whether the mineral rights came with the deed or not? Is that an answer?
Not with, you have to understand that I don't know how many deeds.
There's 500.
Big bucks of these deeds.
And to go through every one and say, okay, our mineral rights excluded from this or not, is a humongous task. We believe, because no activity is occurring out there that we're not aware of, certainly anything right now, that since those purchases were made, what, 50 to 55 years ago, that in all likelihood, there's no active use for anything like that, but if somebody reworded mineral rights and wanted that stack in the box, we don't know that yet, so I hated to make a blanket statement upon us when I didn't want to do that.
I understand. One other thing.
I was just going to ask this question about this kind of trial period, that after one year, if the City of Athens felt it couldn't handle it, or for some reason, wanting to arrest itself of this, that ODNR would take it back, no questions asked, or something? Is that correct?
That's what it says, yes.
Okay, I guess the question is, and it also says that one year from now, ODNR can say, gee, on second thought, would like it back.
Yes.
And that's a no questions asked either? I mean, there's no negotiation on these points, right?
That's correct.
Okay, why might, I mean, I know you can't foresee the future, but, you know, I guess I'm wondering what might contribute to your wanting it back?
Be as facetious as I possibly can. If they want to put Walley World in there, we're not interested in Stroud's Run becoming the next amusement park.
Oh, I see, it's a protection in a sense.
We want the resource to remain as it is, or better.
Or for some reason, you got a ton of money all of a sudden, and you want to.
Does it change?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm not hearing, though, that anything would preclude the city after a year or so that if, and I hesitate even to ask this, because a lot of ideas have been thrown out, many of which have probably already been disbanded, but, and I don't want this to become, is this what the city secretly wants to do, but a road from East State Street even to the top of the ridge, a possible lodge overlooking Stroud's Run, is there, when I see that we cannot give it to anyone else as a lease to say, develop a lodge, is that a possibility down the road if we wanted to, or?
Not without massive change to infrastructure. There's no sewer out that way, there's inadequate water to do that kind of facility, and as you say, it would take a lot of permission from the Ohio Department of Transportation to get a new access point off of US Route 33. So all of those preclude that. I think that the only discussions I've heard within the advisory committee is, if we wanted to have a small nature center where we could run more educational classes for grade school, high school, or college age, or adult education, then you need to house that somewhere, and would it not work within the current barn and house, other structures, something like that might be looked at. But one of the things to remember is that one of the original goals of this project was to protect the watershed of about 5,000 acres, and the original goal was to buy it all, and they have about half of it. And unless you sewer that basin, you're always going to have a water quality issue. So you don't want and cannot realistically do anything high impact in that from a facility standpoint, unless you build a sewer hole in. And if we hit the lottery or something and get an extra 30 or 40 million, I guess we could, but that's not, it's not within the mission, as you can look behind me, I mean, Dr. Dow had a goal of, an educational one, of a reclamation of old farmland that had been reused and reused, and wanted to reclaim a forest area. that had been reused and reused, and wanted to reclaim a forest area. We see the results of that some 55 years later, 45 to 50 years later. It's a great, beautiful park, and it needs to stay that way. But we need to improve the things that John Nouse and Peter Gostis and other people are doing out there in the trails, and the Horsemen's Association is doing with the rival trails. And I think that's one of the things that, you know, Ed didn't talk about, that Dan West, the chief of parks, and I have talked about quite a bit, is it's difficult for the central office, or even some degree when you're handling three parks, for the local office to go and gather and get local resources to commit. Whereas a city can. They can spend the time, the effort, they have the connections, they can go to local foundations, they can try to do some things that, in all likelihood, it's a brand-new source of money that the state could never develop. It's the commitment with us, with the Strauss Run Committee, the Friends of Strauss Run, and city government to try to utilize and develop those. That's kind of the risk we're taking. But is it going to cost you some money? Yep. It's going to cost you some money.
Okay, the one-year clause, considering how vast city government sometimes runs, would it be viable to have a longer clause, or several stop, you know, drop dead dates or sunset dates? I don't want to, I don't care what you call it. I mean, one year's nice, but we have response time with a firm sometime here, and, you know, two years down the line, we may decide, you know, first year we may think, that's all rosy, five years from now, we may be looking at a disaster and say, okay, we need assistance, we need to do something about it. Is that?
I think it's something that we could come back and visit. I don't think that our division, and I can't give you a definitive answer on this, but I don't think the division would be interested in a two, or three, or four, because we need to speak for our administration, our current administration. We can't commit another administration to.
Anything else? I see what you're saying. Okay.
Well, Paul, in some ways, we sort of negotiated that one year, because that's the only point in this whole agreement, that the state can say, I'll take it back, or give it to me back. But item five in there, where it concludes us, we cannot transfer lease, or in any way assign its interest to Substate, or the real estate to anyone other than the state of Ohio, that if we're not fulfilling our mission, and there still is, presumably, there's always going to be a state parks and recreation department, that would be a decision for that then administration, where there's different mayor figures now, I can probably bring a little guarantee that in ten years. But a new governor, because their term limited, et cetera, it's something that if the city really says, I don't want to do this anymore, you always have the right, I think, under this agreement, to go back to the state and say, I'm going to sell it off unless you take it back.
I think you have to understand that Strauss Run didn't belong to the Division of Parks and Recreation to begin with. I believe we got it from forestry, and we have a history of making sure that the resource is protected.
Okay. No, I was just asking, just in terms of our responsibility.
I don't think we will need to commit to it an additional year, because it's a legal binding contract, and I don't think, frankly, I don't think our chief has that. But it's business we're planning.
Okay. Just asking.
Okay, are there any other questions for Ed?
Oh, I don't know if it's general. So.
Well, go ahead.
The mom, in the, whereas, at the beginning, it talks about the 49.5 from Division of Parks and Rec to be combined with $62,000 for the combined total. Is that all of these funds that are in the spreadsheet that you're referring to, the combination of projected earned income? Or is that $62,000 coming from somewhere?
That was a number that was created by the budget, and it was probably created prior to our current budget. But they do want to see where we're making some dollar commitments towards. They don't care where that comes from. But I think for us, we should have a one-year operating, and Doug was my budget chairman and all, that's better than me.
I'm Doug Franklin, I'm the assistant dean for recreational wellness of Ohio University. I constructed this monster budget for five years. It's based on a concept that no business operation should ever start out unless they actually know what's going to happen over the next five years. I built this in such a way that the 49.5, because I didn't want to count it as operational dollars, it would go in to a capital replacement type of plan that would be basically used to jumpstart any kind of endowment, so that you would go in and you'd be able to draw, because eventually, you're going to be drawing interest on that endowment for operations. And so the operations piece runs out at about total revenue of 157,000 was the original estimate, we're both, believe now, 118,800. Some of that money comes from the city of Athens, some of that money comes from Ohio University match, some of that money comes from sponsorships and gun range, donations, and a variety of other incomes. So basically, it's income over expense. There should be money at the end of the year to put towards that endowment, and you're carrying a balance forward every year for five years. I'm not exactly sure, Mayor, where you got the 500,000 from. I'm a very conservative estimator. My revenue projections are based on 5% growth in the first two years, 7% growth in the next two years, and 10% growth in the final year. Basically, you're having to build a program, you're having to build brand recognition. And once you get that going, I think the community center can probably support this, as you're bigger now than you were when you started. I know Campus Recreation is larger now than when we started in 1995, 1996. Businesses tend to grow. You try to control expenses, and you try to generate more revenue, and that's basically what I've allocated, or I've acknowledged here. The expense assumes a growth rate based on 3% of the cost of living increase or consumer price index. It's not until the final year that we bring on a person to actually manage this thing that allows you a flexibility of about $55,000 to $60,000 in your budget. The one thing, Mr. Biass, about the concept of a lodge, that pretty much was dismissed within the first three months of discussion. I also led a group of students to do a study, and we did a qualitative and quantitative study of this, and we came up with what's finally called Doug's Paradox, and that is, the more money that you put into capital items like a lodge, the more money you'll lose, the more money you'll make, but the more money you'll lose. And so, pretty much after that first, that initial report, we decided that this was not a smart thing to do. What we really wanted to do, and it was kind of nice for everybody to come together, because quite frankly, the naturalists wanted to keep it natural, the recreation people wanted just to have pretty low-impact recreation activities. We wanted to make it a family park, we did not want to make it a burrow, we did not want to make it, certainly didn't want to make it a cedar park, or Wally World, or whatever. It's a very nice, the number-one thing that came out of all of the surveys, and all of the information sessions, were actually this concept of, it's a quiet, serene place, it's a nice place to go walk, and that's what we like about it. And so, you can see the vision, you can see the mission. There is no intention on our part, certainly, and we would hope that we would have some input on the future of the operation, that that park is going to stay as natural as possible.
In the first year, you project significant additional income in that fee-for-service section above what you show actual that ODNR has been collecting, and I'm curious what that's based on?
Could you be more specific in what's on?
You're projecting $41,800 in earned income, where you have listed that ODNR's been bringing in $18,000?
Well, ODNR has not been collecting any rent on the, or a very low rent on the house, to give you an example of their.
That's $4,500 difference, and then there's all these other categories, too.
Yes, ma'am, I'm about to explain that, too. This is not, this is not a knock on ODNR, but there are a lot of revenue generation capabilities out there, possibilities, people are interested in doing certain things, there's no sponsorships out there. Right now, for an example, the crew team pays $35 a year. Macro hosts a brigade out there for $35 for an event. I charge $35 for a basketball court for one hour. There's revenue generation capability there. I've gone through, kind of looking at it, unfortunately, this is kind of blocked out in the reproduction, but where I have campsite rental, basically, it might be an increase in campsite rental, it might be an increase in group campsite rental, it might be an increase in boat rental, it might be an increase in a variety of different things. We don't rent shelters, or we don't rent them for enough money. And so really, it's right pricing what you have out there. Eventually, we'll draw sponsorship, because we'll actually have some more focus out there. Once the park starts to grow, you'll start to get more people that are interested. People like to sponsor things when they see a lot of people going out there. And what we would hope to be able to do is, at the end of the year, two years or three years, we can go to a company and say, you'll get 50,000 hits, you'll get 50,000 visits that will walk by and see this sign. We might have, excuse me, a Pepsi Pavilion, we might have an AEP Pavilion, and so you have a variety of different ways to generate revenue.
Okay, this just is a small question, it's about operations, so I don't know if you have the person. But I was going to say, with these income generating things like boat rental and campsite rental, et cetera, if there's nobody on site, that is a question for you, Mr. Mayor, how, you know, you go out there and you want to rent a boat, and there's nobody there? I guess, I was wondering how this works in terms of personnel?
There is people out there, there's no full-time personnel, there's part-time and seasonal personnel, so it's basically right sizing the personnel out there. Question is, do you need to hire a full-time person to manage that, or do you hire, you know, historically, recreation, young recreation professionals, or seasonal? I got my first job as a seasonal recreational manager for a park.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there would be somebody on site in order to sell these services?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Franklin on finances, Paul?
It's probably not you, but I don't see the present rental for the moorings for the canoes, is that in here on this spreadsheet, or no?
For moorings? Don't they? Boat rentals?
Yeah, well, no, I don't, they have moorings for the canoes and everything, all those little boats with the holes and the chains in them, are those?
No idea.
Are they?
Ties on the docks?
If you want to store your boat out there and chain it, there's a stink type thing you could do, permit for that.
Is that a cost right now, or is that? Okay, I don't see a charge here, that's why. Okay. That's why I was asking. When she started talking, when you started talking about boat rentals?
There's a lot of little things that will go in and be much more specific, but, you know, we tried to put something together. More revenue generation.
Well, that's it, I don't see this.
Yes, sir. Boat rental has been mentioned a couple of times, but in the agreement, ODNR, I don't see that we're getting those boats. Are the boats already existing, and we're getting them with this agreement, or is that we buy some boats and?
We'd have to add an expense that we don't have listed.
Not soon.
These canoe boats?
No boats, okay.
What kind of boats?
Canoes, or small paddle boats, or small jump boats. And I don't know.
They're being motorized boats.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. I can't answer that question, I don't know if we get the boat.
We'll talk about boats. Any other financial questions?
Do you, are any of these part-time people, people who are already in our city rest department, or are these all new positions, additional money that we're looking at?
Additional money. It's whether they're due, it's additional money. They could be expanded work for an existing employee, but it's additional money. We did not mention in here, in the budgets, anyone that was, other than this item, cost of city service labor, under clerical support, we added that as a cost, and that exists, because we don't think we're going to have to add anybody to the front desk of the community center, and that's where we would take on phone or online registration for campsites, et cetera. Also, for right now, we're running programs there this summer, kayaking and other things, we run that through there. So we recognize the expense, but it's just going to be more of a sheer expense. But when you're talking about concessions, maintenance seasonal, maintenance concessions off-season, yeah, that's all new people.
Okay. But Janka? I was at the public meeting the other night, and I think there was a discussion of signage, because I was thinking, if we do this, or when we do this, I think we ought to do it well, you know? And that's why I was concerned about personnel being there to sell the services. But also, is there some discussion of improved signage, maybe? Directing people here and there? Is that a line item in here?
Yeah, somewhere, I thought I saw it.
Does anybody want to speak to that committee?
When you say signage, I think of different things. I mean, right now, we do not heavily promote on the government channel or our city's website anything about Strauss Run. We will, we'll have maps, how to get there, we'll have more activities there. If Campus Recreation is putting $5,000 a year into it, you can bet, when they list on their brochures, things you can do, Strauss Run's definitely going to be listed, right?
Yeah, no, I was actually thinking of signage in the park.
It's listed under material.
We haven't discussed that detail yet, Janka.
Okay, signage.
Quite honestly. We've got broad items, but exactly what we're going to do now.
Right.
We're talking about signage inside the park.
Inside the park, yeah.
Yeah, we replaced most of those signs already, so most of those are all brand-new, except for the entrance signage, and we're not going to place that until seven.
Okay. The agreement says that your signs will be removed. I think they were talking about the title. The entrance. The state park. And I thought somebody mentioned a little kiosk with maps and things.
That's one of the ideas that people have had, and it's come from some of the different volunteer groups, it's a, it would be a good idea to have something like that.
I think it's.
What we tried to give to you is a bare bones budget. If you want to give it, spend more, certainly within your prerogative. Or if we find other grants, or other items that want to do those things, yeah, we're going to look for them. But I thought, realistically, I can pretty well guarantee you, we'll have to spend about that much money to do it. And these are some sources we've identified that will pay a portion of it, and some revenue sources. City funds, taxpayers would have to pick up the balance. Now, sure, a future council, that's ear and council, that's the power of, you can change the budget.
And certainly, grant funding is.
Up or down?
You know, project oriented, a good portion of the time, so some of those things could be addressed in that way. Any other finance questions for Mr. Franklin?
Thank you.
I think what I'll do at this point is just kind of tell you what I feel is what council needs to look at. Just a minute, Janka. And then, we do have a number of folks who worked on the task force here, they're very knowledgeable about what's been done over the time that they've met weekly, for a very long time, and put in a great deal of hard work, and they're a very impassioned group of people, and can answer just about any question that you have. I feel that this is a magnificent opportunity for the city to have this beautiful piece of property, and, you know, it's a premier spot for the region and the state. It's our space. That doesn't mean I don't recognize that there are questions that we have to very carefully think through, how we manage it, how we finance it, and how we protect this asset. What we need to do as a council is decide exactly what ordinances we would need to make this happen. I am assuming that the first thing would be to pass an ordinance that would permit the mayor to enter into the agreements. Now, we can make suggestions of what could be added to the agreements in terms of, you know, some of the things, the timber, the gas and oil, that we've talked about, anything else that council has ideas about, but then allow the. But then allow the mayor to enter into the state agreement. We also can suggest the mayor enter into grant pursuits and agreements for the future. I know that some of the questions that we've talked about is, is the deed included? And it's been assured by O D N R that yes, it is. And the details of OU and what exactly will be contributed there is not necessarily complete at this time. As the mayor has said, this plan, this presentation that they've brought to you is broad enough that it can be fleshed out over the future. They deliberately didn't attend to little details of how things would be handled and where boats would come from and that kind of thing. It would be an ongoing discussion with council, ongoing management with the city in terms of how it would be run. Time-wise, the O D N R would like for us to have this passed in June so that it is passed in this fiscal year. July 1 is the fiscal year change. I know that's been a little bit of a hazy question. Taking over management of the park at the end of this season. So, we would not be responsible for this season, but they would like for us to enter into the agreement in this fiscal year. Now, what I'd like to do is open the discussion to council for other points. And then, as you've got specific questions, I'm sure that some of the folks here may want to leap up and come and answer them. So, comments and questions from council, Mr. Sands?
Just a quick question. Take over management at the end of this season. It's the season.
Like October.
This is my question. I think this is a very exciting opportunity, too. I think it's beautiful property and I think the task force did a really good job in thinking it through. You meant pass it prior to June, not necessarily in June?
Prior to July 1.
Prior to July 1, yes, okay.
And you're saying first read in May?
Right. So, we would have to have the, whatever ordinance we're moving on crafted early in May, that's very soon, and have it read for the first time in May. Other comments or questions or things you'd like added? Nancy?
Are there any of us that have a conflict, like the university participation? Does that mean I have a conflict with the students? Or, you know, is there any other contract that has a conflict associated with it? Just wondering. My dear. I have, I actually have a very serious question, and that was just a speculative question because it seems like all the difficult things come with that attachment. I have only heard from my constituents that they aren't particularly, except for David, maybe, they aren't particularly crazy about this idea. They're worried about the police and the rest. And it seems to me that it's a little bit odd that we're gonna accept this pig in the poke for an unknown amount of money with lots of speculation. Maybe they call yourself conservative, maybe somebody else says liberal, who cares? And then, there's a theoretical go-to-the-voters-for-money to cover our core mission. And I think there are a lot of people who are concerned about us doing that, as they were about some other things we've done. And so, I guess I'm at the point where I really want to know exactly what will be the costs. And I don't think I still know them. I've looked at this and, you know, and nobody can promise me anything. It's all, I've done, I did recreation in an earlier life and I know how they count. I'm concerned that our own recreation department isn't the most efficient thing that's on the earth. The Maximus study says that as well. And so, in addition to my question about conflicts and people who may benefit from this, I'm also interested in how we're gonna justify it. I would like to know what our insurance costs will be with this additional amount, what our service costs. Are we gonna make the city garbage users pay the cost of picking up the garbage out there? I hope not because I don't think that would be fair and equitable. And I think that that should be included in the costs here. Are we gonna, will the sheriff do this? I've heard from people that the sheriff said he'll charge us. I live on the way to Stroud's Run and I know that on a Sunday afternoon, you might have several runs when somebody nearly drowns. I'd like to know what our liability costs are with respect to this, if it's our, if it's our particular thing. Because it's not, it's not clear to me that we're not buying something that's gonna be enormously difficult for us to gauge the cost of. It's a pig in the poke, to use an old term. And, you know, they're basically, it may be wonderful, but I'm very concerned about it. And David, you've been calling me every night and I probably won't change my mind. But I'm with you on some things and you know that.
Are there task force members that would like to address any of those concerns that are?
I have other points I'd like to address.
John, go ahead.
Let me just address the one question.
All right.
And for the one question, certainly, that's the sheriff. I spoke to the.
Sir, do it at the microphone. We probably have 20 people in the room and quite possibly several hundred watching, so...
Let me address the sheriff's point directly. I specifically asked him that question. He said.
You've heard it too?
No, I asked him, and he was part of the, um, the group of people that we interviewed a year ago. And I specifically asked about that. It's in the original report. He will not charge us to do patrols out there. Plain and simple, there are no additional charges. He provides that service.
Well, yeah, we pay taxes, I mean, that go to the county, but I'm just wondering how long, I mean, before he starts thinking that this is city property?
He specifically told me.
Told you?
Told me directly when I asked him that question. So, we built our budget based on the concept that we did not have additional security charges based on those specific questions. I also talked to the Ohio University Police Chief. There is a, an agreement in Athens County between the sheriff, the police department, OU P D, and the highway patrol as far as responders. I can't be any more specific than that and I can't be any more clear than that. There will be no more charges for.
Yeah, we have mutual aid. We all know about that.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's not what we're really talking about. I'm talking about just the day-to-day operational thing. I mean, I, I'm concerned about the bottom line.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Mills?
Well, now, as task force member, I'm saying Athens Conservancy and Athens Trails. First of all, I've swum out there many, many times and have never seen the sheriff called out there because somebody was almost drowning. I've never seen anybody.
Or traffic accidents. It's a very frequent occurrence. I mean, I live on Columbia, John, I've seen it.
Well, in any case, I wanted to address, go back and address an earlier point. There is a question about mineral rights. I have read all the deeds and I've found that approximately 200 acres have mineral rights outstanding. It's in this area right here of the park. I have not done a further search, which would be very laborious with our system, to see who the current holders of those mineral rights are or if, to ensure that the other parcels do in fact include the mineral rights, but the deeds do state that they do include the mineral rights. I also want to read an excerpt from the Athens Trails letter of support. "We ordinarily would not support the state turning a state park over to a municipality, but this is a special case for a variety of reasons, and we are convinced that the city can do an exemplary job of managing the park. The reasons why this is an exceptional case include the fact that the park directly borders the city itself, that the city has already acquired preservation lands contiguous with the park and integral to its ecosystems and protection, that the city has demonstrated a willingness to be a player in providing quality recreational opportunities through trail system construction, that the Stroud Run Task Force and by reference the city has pledged to place as a priority the protection of the natural quality of the park, that the city has available expertise for quality management, that Ohio University through several departments has demonstrated a commitment to be a part of the use, management, and scientific study of the park, and that the nature of relatively restricted access to the park already places it somewhat off the beaten path for tourists while being more accessible to city residents." Now, I also want to mention, you know, we have the capacity to undergo a very good planning process here. What's in the plan is just the very bare beginnings of a discussion. Nothing more than that at this point. But a critical point, we're talking about the status of the park and what its future will be if the city does not take it over, and there's a critical point that was not addressed. There have already been serious problems at certain times with water quality in the lake, or at least serious questions have arisen. In order to maintain good water quality in this lake, good watershed management is necessary. The city is poised to put together a watershed management plan and to try to implement such a plan to continue usable water quality in this lake. This is not really within the state's, um, plan of operations because they have too many other irons in the fire. This is not a practical thing for them to do. It is a practical thing for the city to do, and that's an important point. The lake is a centerpiece of that park, and if the lake's water quality deteriorates with further development within the basin to the point where the lake is not usable for water contact sports, then we really do have a serious problem. Whereas, the city can ensure, or at least is in a better position to ensure that water quality can be maintained in the lake. Thank you.
Let me ask, John, how is the city going to control development when there's private ownership beyond the park, which is the source of most of the outpouring of the storm, from the septic systems that are malfunctioning and so on? I mean, your argument is based upon us having greater control. We have control beyond the three-mile limit and subdivisions, but beyond that, I mean, it's outside the city.
The Athens Conservancy has already arranged to acquire 75 additional acres within the watershed that they will be turning over to the city. We are looking at the possibility of acquiring another 260 acres, possibly in cooperation with the city. We have the capacity to negotiate conservation easements to ensure greater quality of the land, and the city will have more, more of a basis to act on things like restricting the subdivision with the area and so forth.
But, I mean, there's no lake. I mean, that's pie in the sky, John. Restrict subdivisions? I mean, come on.
This is a special case. You know, it's clear that subdivisions with septic fields, and I'd like to see anybody run a sewer from there into the city sewer system, that any packaged sewer plants or septic fields would be very deleterious to the lake.
But I think you're, what you're creating is false promises. I don't think that there's any way we can control development in that area beyond the limits of the law. Maybe?
But we have more flexibility in.
I mean, we don't have.
Expanding our sewer authority within the law.
I do think that we need to think in terms of, we don't need to decide this issue tonight and, you know. We certainly need to bring up the issues, and what we have to decide is what ordinances need to be brought forward and what they should contain. And then, as the discussion moves forward, will be the time to decide yes or no?
I guess that, with all due respect, Harold, I think that when we're talking about this, there's all this promise it'll come back to council, and I've seldom seen things come back to council. I think this is the time to get the issues out and get them hashed out.
I agree that the issues should be.
And hashed out, I said. You know, I mean, that was, and I think people can make promises, but they're not in the positions of authority, you know? So, John doesn't have any, I mean, he's a great guy, I like him a lot, but he doesn't have any authority. So, don't promise, John, please.
This is, this is the one with outstanding, right? You have standing or no?
My name's Chris Paul, and I was part of the task force. I think some of the things that Nancy's getting to is, I know that you wanted to see more of a management plan before.
Early.
And we talked about that. And at this point, there is no management plan for the park, and there never has been, which is a big problem. If the state continues to manage, quote-unquote, the facility, there won't be a management plan written by the state for the park. So, even if it was, if it maintained in state ownership, any management plan would probably be written by a group of volunteers and the city. Because there is a water quality issue, and watershed management is something that needs to happen. Now, there are other ways of dealing with watershed quality issues besides direct control of subdivisions and those sort of things. There's a lot of education that we can do, and also working with the county to, I talked with Bob, and they are starting to tighten up their regulations and their health code and such. So, that would be something that we, as an entity, would be able to do that the state can't do. And we would have more access to grants and expertise that the state doesn't have right now, and the state will not undertake, they will not write a management plan for this, for this park. A lot of the issues that are coming out have to do with the management, the future management of the park. We included an outline of what we see as goals and mostly goals for what a management plan would ultimately have, and some of the tasks and who would undertake those tasks, not only for a management plan, but also for, you know, health and safety and facilities management. I guess the thing is, is that as a task force, we couldn't ask all these people to sit down and flush out a management plan because there is a degree of time and energy that that does take without knowing that the city was behind what was going on. I don't know if that would be necessarily fair. On the other hand, we're on our way to a management plan because of the work that Doug Franklin did with all the research that he does, the research that, all the natural history assessment and analysis that's been done over the years by all the various departments. So, a lot of the things are ready to put in place. It's more of coordinating and flushing out, getting public input into a management plan. And I think a lot of these issues would be more settled through that. We have that starting in, like, the second year after everything's kind of settled down, and that the task force, which would become an advisory committee, could start working on that. So, I think that if you look at some of the things we've written, you can see where we're going. I mean, the number-one management goal is to ensure the continued conservation and preservation of the natural resources. And that's the overriding vision, and that was, that was what our task force did through all its work, was that, that vision, so.
I appreciate that. You know, Chris, let's go back and say, so, as I recall, when you guys talked about it, it was lower-impact type of development, and yet, what we have is more in the budget for less money. So, you know, my credulity is strained a little bit. We're doing more and we're charging more, but we're not supervised. I mean, you know, it's just.
Well, I think it depends on what you define as more. I mean.
Gun ranges, more boat rails, more blah, blah, blah.
Well, there's a gun range already there.
But I mean, more of it. We're now charging.
Yeah, but it could be used more without expanding it. You know, use might become a greater thing, though the space that it's taking is not necessarily anymore, spatial, a spatial area that's taking. And because you're managing it actively and working with the groups that want to use it, the management of it's gonna mean that it's cleaner and more well-taken care of than it is right now. And that's one thing about local control, is that the babysitter is there and not, you know, watching TV up someplace.
The babysitter's on East State Street, isn't it?
Yeah, but you have the local controls there, you know? And so, you see what was going on.
I don't care.
There's our babysitter.
No, I mean, but we have, but we have to ask these questions because we represent the people, and you guys are all an interest group, in my opinion. You know, and that's what I saw the other night. I sat there on Thursday for a couple hours and listened to all the horseback riders and, you know, it's good to hear them, but, you know, the ordinary person on the street's gonna be dishing out the money.
Yeah, but you have to also recognize that because of local control and local coordination, those user groups are going to be putting in time and energy into management. And right now, they're putting time and energy into management. It's not very well-coordinated, and it may go at cross purposes to what the vision of, of the ultimate vision of the park is. I mean, there has been some concern about cross, crosswires about coordination of some of these things. So, local control will. of these things. So local control will enable the city and the user groups and the public to have a better control and a better product.
Who's the traffic cop, then, Chris? Who's the referee?
Well, I think one of the things we envisioned was having an ultimate, like, an advisory committee that would act as an advising body.
And they have to wait a month to get resolution, sorry, guys, to get resolution to issues that come out?
Well, I don't know. I mean, it depends on how, you know
You know, I mean, that's just
Well, I mean, that's a question, is that in the ultimate five-year term, you know, maybe the people who rent the house can also have, you know, eyes on the ground. You know, I mean, there are, but those sort of issues are going to be looked at and addressed also through the management plan and the management process. That has to occur with this. And if the city doesn't necessarily take it over, that management plan is not going to happen. And then those questions and those concerns won't get addressed until there's some kind of crisis. So watershed crisis or something.
We've drained the lake before.
Yep. So, you know, I think that local control, you know, is a good thing, and, you know, we have a good population to work with, because we have lots of experts and stuff. So
Debbie? I, you know, I want to be sure, to be really clear about how much I think all of us respect the expertise and the concern and the work that people have put into developing this. I think that we do have a lot of talent and a lot of people in this community who care about quality of life in the community and about this park in particular. And I think that, you know, what we have to look at is, can we make it work financially, and are we being responsible with the taxpayers' dollars? And I don't want those concerns and those questions to, you know, come across as feeling negative or anything. I think that people have, you know, put a lot of really good, solid work into this. It's just, you know, looking at these financial projections, it's difficult for me to tell how much we're being asked to promise that we're going to pay for, because a lot of it does still seem their projections, you know? And, but if we go through with an ordinance saying that we're going to do this, we're ultimately committing to covering this, whatever it ends up being. And that, it's a lot of
The council establishes the budget.
Right.
The advisory committee does, the administration doesn't, etc. I mean, you can bash the recreation department of management all you want, Nancy, but, I mean, hey, you kind of get what you get.
I'm not trying to bash it, I'm just saying, and I asked you already
I don't know how else you can put your words
Maximus, Maximus study says
Maximus study also says, and we've been over this a hundred times
There's five other council members. Let's hear it from somebody else.
That a recreation department is not expected to cover itself. There are other services in a city that do not cover themselves as well. And some of those are safety services. They don't have any level of income. Recreation does have some return, but I don't know of any recreation department that makes a profit that is always in the black. I think that they're striving towards that, but that's not an ordinary expectation in a city for recreation to be totally self-supporting.
You can correct, I mean, we could go back to Maximus, and this is the last thing, and it says, some things should be more supported than others. And I think that's a guideline we could use going forward.
Then maybe, but I don't think that that means that all of this means nothing, because they don't charge enough for adult recreation.
Yeah. It's just the question of how much money this will take when we're already putting more money in.
Are there other questions from other council members?
So, on the spreadsheet, what are we actually talking about the city being committed for? I see a $27,000, no, $27,000 line item. I see cost of city labor at $8,700. The bottom thing down here is $102,000, I mean, total operating expenses. I mean, if you're talking about ordinances that come through and be done, some of the questions I'm looking at, to my mind, is that really what I hear for the most part are from members of the task force who are for it, of course, and people from my ward, and you can always call up and let me know, and I'm sure someone will, that this is a terrible waste of money. As you say, some things are supposed to be able to make, you know, don't make money, police, fire, et cetera. And that's what they're asking for rather than parks. I like parks, I like this thing. But again, you know, I like Halloween, too, but I always have to look at the bottom line. So what are we talking about on the spreadsheet that makes, that ends up in an ordinance that we're committed to?
Mayor, can you answer that question? I'm not sure that
I know it's whatever we choose, but
I'm
Part of it is that some of these expense items are related to revenue items. Obviously, you're not going to have quite as much expense as, you know, say seasonal staff, if you decide, oh, I don't want to do boat rentals. You're not going to get the revenue if you don't do boat rentals, which you aren't going to hire the person to do it either. So part of that is what's programmatic, and you have to go into a cost study analysis by eye-blind item, look through there and say, what are fixed costs? And there's really very few when you have property that is already paid for and only part-time people. So you have no long-range commitment to an employee. You're going to have some insurance costs, you're going to have some utility costs, et cetera. Everything above and beyond that, you have to balance how much, do I expect any revenue for it? Does it cost me money to try to get some of that revenue? And remembering that, in most cases, the revenue you get will offset the total cost that you have. I mean, that's the basic theory of this budget. Even though we build in right now, house rentals, say, we're going to rent a house at $500 to $800 a month, they're going to have them pay utilities, you're going to have a vacancy rate, and if you've got to repair it, you've got to go in there and repair it. You know, and you make estimates of all of those things.
Would it be correct that the operating funds, there wouldn't really be operating funds in this budget? It would be a part of budgeting for the '07 year?
Right. Everything presented is an '07 budget figure.
Rip, if I may, or, I have a little experience in looking at budgets, and I usually take the revenue, which is the top half of the page, minus the expenses, the bottom half of the page, and if you want some numbers that you can get your teeth round, it's the very last line called surplus shortfall. So, you know, as you add or take away from revenue or expense and what you want to do, you can adjust those kind of things. Mayor, is that in the ballpark of what we are looking for, that council may look for support?
Well, I mean, I think that that's the broad parameter there, that if we operate in our first year out there, somewhere in the neighborhood of $118,000, and we know we have, right now, committed $25,000 from various departments at the university, we can make the decision to put all of the $49,500 toward operational expenses, or some portion of it to capital, future capital purchases, or endowment versus the other, and that, can we get additional commitments and how much revenue? The net is what's there. That would be in the budget. You could pass a budget for 2007 right now, if you want to put it with these ordinances. There's nothing that says you can't. You're going to be the council in 2007. Some of the questions that you asked are really just unanswerable, because we don't have the experience of running, Stroud runs State Park. We have not done all the study. I mean, I'm not sure how much time and effort both council and ourselves should spend on it. You know, that's why I asked for the resolution of the thing, was yeah, we're willing to actively consider this. I got this advisory committee back together. We've put work into it. We've had a lot of meetings about it. We spent staff time on it and volunteer time on it. And all I'm really asking is, tell me what you want on the contract, give me some questions, we'll try to get them answered. I'd like it on the agenda the second meeting in June, vote it up or down at the second meeting, or, second meeting in May, second meeting in June. And then, we're done, or, move on. One or the other.
Okay, this somewhat has to do with operating costs, because I'm looking at the draft cooperative agreement between Athens and the Department of Natural Resources, page 15. And it says that Athens requests the following of the division: assist in controlling or mitigating litter vandalism, timber trespass, abusive recreation, and other law enforcement activities, plus these other kinds of services. So is that something that, I mean, it sounds to me like that's an ODNR person
Yes.
controlling and doing some of these other activities. Is that going to be included in an ongoing basis? Is that part of this agreement?
Yes, it is part of the agreement, but I think what has to be realized is the number of people in ODNR within the particular region that are devoted to that, the number of places they have to go. And we want to make sure they have the permission from the city and especially the desire that if you see these things happening, we want you to be able to have the power and to do those. But how often they will be through there, not that often.
So
I mean, be on at least probably a weekly basis, usually.
Every week?
How often? Not every day.
No. So in other words, the city would have to do litter control and et cetera, but this ODNR would come in maybe, did we say once a week? Or we didn't say?
Whatever the schedule is, we really didn't say. I mean, we're just saying, they're going to have a much heavier presence, say, in the park during hunting season, because there's something actively to manage there at that particular
But they're committed to that? I guess that's the question. What's the commitment of?
Division of Parks and Recreation, once we no longer hold the deed, we cannot, we can only operate on our own properties.
So this allows you to operate on our property?
The agreement
What you've got, do they have a consent pack?
Yes.
There's a thing there with the Division of Wildlife. Basically, you would have the wildlife officers. They would maintain jurisdiction within that property. They don't have to be the property owner in order to be there.
Okay, so
And also the Division of Watercraft.
Okay, so the ODNR would not, I want to say, manage it in any way, but it's then the Division of Wildlife and the Watercraft
Well, there are portions of the Department of Natural Resources.
Oh, okay.
It's broken into a whole series of sister agencies. We're the Division of Parks and Recreation. The specific agreement there is with the Division of Wildlife, also with the Division of Watercraft. Those would be the three regulatory agencies. The Division of Parks and Recreation, we would have jurisdiction, we would maintain jurisdiction on top of the dam, in the dam itself, because we would hold that deed.
I guess I was trying to translate this into personnel who'd actually be performing some functions that we wouldn't necessarily have to pay for, but that these state agencies, excuse me, would. And that's the basis of my question. Is this translating into personnel who come and do these activities
Wildlife and Watercraft would be, yes. Division of Parks and Recreation, again, we'd have to be lentled
Right.
in order to have jurisdiction.
Yes. It would be helpful to get a little more specificity on what manpower this actually means. I think that would be helpful, if we can somehow make that, if somebody could get us that information somehow. Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
The grants that are listed in the spreadsheet here are really relatively small, and I know that the mayor mentioned applying for some grants. It seems to me that a project like this is something that would have regional benefit, and that there should be significant grants available. If we are applying for those, are you looking at that as building the endowment, or are you looking at any operating dollars through grants?
Some grants will not fund an endowment, and so it would depend entirely on the particular grant. But the reason that you don't see more grant monies listed here is because there's obviously no guarantee there. So the grants would, for the most part, be over and above what we have listed as revenue, and certainly, there's a lot of opportunity and possibilities there, but you can't budget it when you don't have it.
A lot of foundations have pretty structured and lengthy timelines and processes to apply. I guess I wonder if what you want to bring forward now is an authorization to enter into an agreement, and we're not committing any dollars until our next budget year, whether that allows enough time to do some significant fundraising, so that before we're committing dollars, we have a sense of, you know, actual money that's there?
There's an opportunity to start. I, realistically, I don't think in six months' time that you raise huge funds, but you certainly can get a start on it. And the other half to the answer is that during that year, when we could say this is beyond us, there certainly is more time to apply for grant monies.
Hello, my name is Robert Sumney. I live at 20 Briarwood. And basically, I am remembering the meeting that city council gave approval for city hall to go ahead and pursue this situation. And one was that it was ownership, not management. And the second was that there would be definitely more solid commitments in terms of financial commitments involved. And, you know, when I listened to the advisory meeting this past Thursday night, I didn't see that anything had changed. I think basically, city hall has come to you with basically the same situation. And now that they want to put into play the resolutions, the ordinance, and the readings just in time for May, you know, I don't feel as though this is a situation that the city of Athens can really afford. Again, I called it a luxury back in the last time I addressed council, and I would call it a luxury now. With or without the participation of the city of Athens, there will be a park. That the fact that, I guess, the police and fire protection, people are going to come to you and ask for a tax increase. Someone is going to come to you, I believe, in the near future, and ask for a tax increase for indoor and/or outdoor pool. You still have $60,000 that is tossed away every year by the city's recollection for Halloween, again, that the taxpayer eats. This is something that we do not need to enter into. One of the things that really struck me at the advisory meeting Thursday night was not even so much the money, as much as the sheer amount of energy within the city from volunteers, from the city itself, that is going to be expended just to keep this park viable, not even developing it, just keeping it as is. I really think that it would stretch the resources of this town, not just in terms, again, of money, but in terms of volunteerism. When everything is just completely dominated by this one park, this one attempt to keep this park afloat, this is something that I think that you also need to consider. There's just, I think, too much involved for a really little return. You talked briefly about security. This is still something that, you know, while the sheriff's office may help us take care of something for now, that doesn't mean that in the future, with their stretched resources, that, you know, they would come to the city and say, well, we need some money. resources, that, you know, they would come to the city and say, well, we need some money. You know, I added up the numbers that I heard at the advisory meeting Thursday night, and it still didn't come up to the figure of breaking even in terms of the cost. I understand from people that when they say that, well, parks don't break even, they don't make money. Well, in this situation, given the circumstances of the City of Athens and some of the things that are going to be coming up in terms of additional tax increase, then I think we need to talk about that, and we need to say the word "tax increase." Because unless the endowment can completely take care of the funding, along with what little revenue is going to be generated at that park, then basically, some mayor is going to come to council and ask for additional funding that's going to come from the taxpayers of Athens to help break even with this project. This is something that I think that you need to consider, because you will have other items coming up here very shortly, apparently, in regards to increased taxing. And this is something that, as council people, I think you feel, you need to feel the responsibility in terms of maintaining a healthy budget in this town, in terms of making sure that things do take care of themselves. You know, some of the other departments in this city are not expected to raise enough money to break even. I could kind of see that in the city parks and recreation to some degree. But then when we add an item like this, then I'm saying, yes, I think as a taxpayer, I need to see this City of Athens be able to have more firm commitments. And we are talking, by the way, you know, some of this money that we are talking about coming in right now is only going to be with us for about five years. If you raise $500,000 in endowment, and you're going to try to take the interest off of that, plus the $32,000 that you want to generate as far as park revenue, you know, you're not really getting anywhere near the figure that we need to get at to even break even at this point. So I just really think that at this stage, with the fire and police the way it is, with the proposed additions to recreation in the form of the pools that we're talking about, and in terms of soccer fields, whatever, I think that this is something that is a luxury. And, you know, I would ask that we reject the park at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Phil. And then I'm going to wind things up after Phil makes his comments, or we'll be here this time next week, and be thinking about what you need added into the question.
Phil Cantino, Thirty-Three Cable Lane. Just wanted to assure Nancy that at least a second person in her district does support this. One question that keeps coming up as I talk with people is what's wrong with the status quo? You know, what's so wrong with the way it's being managed now? In most of the 25 years I've lived here, I think the park's been managed really well. In recent years, the state has been putting less resources into it, and in spite of very good efforts on the part of the current management, it shows. You know, so they can't keep up with it, and they're getting a little less and less money coming in. But the current management is not the central issue for me. It's the future of the park, what the state will do with it in the future. I do a lot of walking at Stroud's Run, and I often think how wonderful it is that this beautiful place will be safe, will be there for our children and grandchildren. And then I learned a few months ago that it isn't necessarily safe, as I told you about an earlier time I spoke, that the legislature has been considering a bill that would permit logging and gas and oil drilling in state parks and state nature preserves. Now, the version of it that permitted logging did not make it out of committee, as we were told over there. There is a House version of it that permits gas and oil drilling that probably will be introduced this summer. And you've got to realize that the access roads that are built for gas and oil wells can be very damaging. But, you know, whether or not that bill passes, and of course, I hope it won't, the very fact that the state is considering oil and gas drilling in state parks, I think is outrageous and is, you know, evidence that the state legislature can't be trusted with the stewardship of our precious natural areas. Stroud's Run would be a lot safer if it were privately owned, not privately, if it were locally owned and managed, because the people who care the most about Stroud's Run are Athens area residents. And, you know, there's no telling what the state will do with the park if it longs on. In spite of Mr. Frank's reassurances, which I appreciate, we, no one knows what the state legislature will do, and I don't have a whole lot of faith in the state legislature. They may close it. They could even sell it by an act of the legislature, I'm told. And we simply can't allow this to happen. This park is too important to the quality of life in Athens. I know the city budget is stretched and that some funds will be needed, at least the first few years, to make this work, but I still urge you to support this. You know, contrary to the views of the previous speaker, in my mind, protecting something beautiful that enriches all of our lives is not a luxury. And, you know, I consider this in the same category of expenditures as the purchase of arts fests, something I also supported. And these are things that distinguish a progressive enlightened community like Athens from one in which recreational opportunities and aesthetic experiences are only available to the privileged few who can afford to pay for them individually. And, you know, as the nation and the state move more and more towards a sort of pay-your-own-way attitude about everything, it's all that and more important for communities like Athens to be proactive in protecting those resources that enrich the lives of all of our citizens, regardless of their income. And Stroud's Run is that kind of resource. So, you know, I urge your support to the city to own and manage this park that's so important in making Athens the wonderful place that it is to live in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As we work through this, what I've heard this evening is some consideration of adding to the agreement with ODNR language concerning logging and gas and oil rights, which has been discussed and could be added to that agreement. Is there anything else that you would like added to that agreement? Okay. And, I mean, obviously, we're going to be talking about this again in committee, but this gives me some direction to move forward. So, thank you, and I don't have any miscellaneous. Does anyone else? No? Arts and Rec. Christine?
If any of the council members want to meet, I'm more than happy to meet, especially with you and Amy, who haven't been in on the discussion the whole time. If you want to meet Jim Field or someone, walk the park or any of us, I'm more than happy to do that.
I just remembered Jim Field trip. Last time when we talked a little bit about Stroud's Run, he suggested the council do a trip out there. And I think that that's something that we'd like to do, and, at 7:00 AM on Saturday. So we'll come up with the date in the near future to do that.
I'll have Debbie pack a bunch.
And a breakfast.
I have spent many, 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 many hours hiking Stroud's Run.
And then show us.
Well, I'll take you to Ramp Valley. In fact, I'm sure the ramps are going right now.
Arts and Recreation is adjourned.
You know where I'm talking about.
I'm going to read the settle Ramp Valley.
Okay.
We've got to pass some lines.
Oops. Okay. We jumped to finance and personnel, I guess.
Oh, we jumped committees here.
A couple items on the agenda, both of which I'm going to defer to the mayor. First one is EPA litigation note. Secondly, parking garage East State Street notes. I think we're going to talk about renewing some and making some redounds.
If I add the Hockey Valley Bank loan for sewer under this place, we have four loans that come due in early June. First is the EPA litigation note, and as you know, what, about a year and a half ago, council established that $1 EPA litigation fee. We're projecting that that fund will have around $90,000 in it around the first of May. We have a $500,000 note outstanding on that. We're going to pay interest, I think, for about $17,050. There'd be bond issuance fees of about $1,300, and we just subtract them. That's how much we'll pay off. That ordinance will be written by bond counsel. The second one would be the parking garage. Right now, we have a $500,000 note on that. It started, I think, at 1.30. We've been paying it down. We have a little over $210,000 in either the balance of the bond debt fund, which was $11,000, and the parking garage fund ended with $199,000. We have to pay this down with $150,000 plus interest. That leaves a little bit of reserve in the parking garage fund in case something goes wrong, because that's an operating thing, so we need to do that. So I would recommend for probably the third year, we'll pay $150,000 down, pay off the interest right in the end. Now, the East State Street notes are a little bit different. That was the one that we gathered up, all the different funds that were left after paying to the final vendors, and we made a million-dollar paydown on it last year. And that closed out everything. So now we're into our TIF plan. The TIF, if we take it as a half a year, because that's, I'll pay our taxes on the 17th, we ought to by June 2nd be able to have half of the TIF money in, that'd be, I think, $152,000. We currently have in the East State Street note fund, I think, about $23,000. So again, we would pay the interest off $2 million, and we wouldn't pay very much down. But at that rate, we will start to pay next year, this time, about $305,000 per year, and we'll start really making some significant inroads on that. The significance of that is that it leaves the current money we're collecting from taxpayers on road rehab to go toward current new projects, because the flow of TIF money is there to handle the balance of the East State Street debt. The other item would probably just be a rollover. We would look around to pay the interest off on it, and that would be the sewer loan that we have last year. We paid down, it was a $300,000 loan, it's now $278,150, I think. We'll just, we have it finalized and looking, I would like to at least pay the interest on that, but quite honestly, we're right in the midst of the final design stuff, and I should be to you before this note is due, to ask you to go borrow more money to do the, probably a million, two or so, to build the Columbus Road Sewer List Station and Line. That is eligible for some FEMA reimbursement of around $750,000 or so, but they tend to do that after you're done, and the state portions get in after you're done. So we're going to have to go out and upfront borrow, and since we still already have this hanging on, I'll either pay that down, or I can borrow more, you know, on the other side, because it's just the same money. So we'll have a specific recommendation to you on that, but that's June 30. We'll probably not introduce that one until, not in April, but in May, because we have time. The other three, though, I think, are June 1st, June 2nd. I guess the East State Street and Parking Garage, it's a lot 12th and 13th, so we have a little bit of time on those two. But all of those will be to you, so I wanted to run them through the finance committee to prepare you for the debt season in the early summer.
The current note at Hockey Valley Bank, what specific project is that for? I don't remember.
I believe it's probably the balance of the Oakmont List Station.
So that's the sewer fund?
And that's what caused it, how exactly we did it, because we still owe somebody the capital improvements, 90 or, how much is left in the capital loan?
$110,000.
$110,000. That was a $400,000, $500,000 project. We had to do it all in-house, there were no grants.
Okay, one other.
The good news was I got a letter from the Ohio Water Development Board congratulating us, us paid off the East End water improvements. We made the final payment on it, January 1. So we're, the water fund, the debt load just went down about $30,000 a year. There is one debt left in the water fund, and it'll be paid off January 1 of 2007. Then we will be debt-free, but I have a point.
I have one more miscellaneous item. We just got a notification from Personal Director that the police lieutenants have agreed to their final agreement, and so we'll need to introduce the agreement and probably suspend on it Monday's meeting, because the agreement, actually, they're operating without a current contract since December of last year, so we need to bring that up. And that's literally all I have, so we'll learn more about it on Monday.
So that's similar to the one we did for the regular officers?
I think the mayor's exhausted his finance and nothing else. We'll move along wherever we're going.
Transportation, I think?
All right, Transportation Committee will meet now. There are four items, excluding a miscellaneous on the agenda, the first of which I'll speak to, and then the other three I'll defer to the mayor. First one is the street tour, the ever-exciting street tour that was this past Saturday. Thank you for those who were able to attend. Basically, a quick recap without going through everything that we actually looked at, because it was a three-hour tour. We took a look at some areas where we'll be doing paving projects, some road rehabilitation, crack seal, concrete repair, grind and patch, raise level. And then we also looked at some curb and sidewalk repair while we were on the tour. So some of the areas that we looked at, East State Street, Simpson Avenue, Court Street, we looked at some Carpenter Brick, the Carpenter Congress Transition, Columbia, Palmer Road, variety of different areas that we looked at while we were on the tour, just examining them, problematic areas, areas that we can improve. And very nice math was put together by Ron Lucas. We also went down and looked at some of these vehicles down at the service garage, of which pertained to the transportation issues in the city. Other than that, other members of council have anything to say about the street tour? Or mayor, anything to add about the street tour?
Yeah.
The, for the projects, projects for the city cost of the upcoming, what we looked at was $125,000 was the estimate that we would be spending this year.
Which is supplemented by grant funding on several other projects.
Right. I think our total budget's probably, what, two and a half to three million for road work, street work.
Any other members of council?
But to follow that up, a large percentage of that is being, we have a small match for some grants or other programs, Issue Two program, the repair of Palmer Road because of the New 33, FEMA's paying some money to repair the Sunset Slips. So there's a lot of money being expended on roads.
Right.
But it's, it's the city, the administration making the city's money go a lot further.
Right, exactly.
I just mentioned, we also noted a lot of broken curbs that needed to be fixed.
Right, yeah.
So I mean, these are necessary, it seems to me, these are necessary repairs.
Curb and sidewalk repair, yes. Anything else about the street tour? Maybe we'll do it twice a year. Okay, next item on the agenda, mayor, Union 682 intersection.
Right, I want you to be aware that as an alternate, the engineering firms, we've talked about it early on, put in to repay the West Union Street from the bridge back to Blue Line, which is, I believe, where we stopped, did the middle section a year ago. That bid came in at about $103,000. It would all be local money. I think, just as we did the other Schaefer to Fairgrounds as an Issue Two project, I think that probably should be one of our issue two projects next year, and try to also do site, because that was just roadway, but also look at curb and sidewalk in that area and try to expand our money. So my recommendation would be not to opt to do that alternate this year, because, given this year's paving car there, it'll be done with the bridge probably till late fall. So we have new road up to what we're constructing, and I just think there's too much height of damage, and I think it would be a good issue two project. So I just wanted to bring you up to date. That's my intention, unless you're telling me different. Want me to go to the next one?
Sure, the bike path.
Bike path, I think we talked earlier in the year, when I was kind of going through the hierarchy of what we had to do, and if all the bids came in, now is the time that we made our request to ODOT to use the south side of East State Street, want to use the limited access highway there. It's time to hire the engineering firm. There's been, we're, engineering estimate on this is $85,000. That's 100% local cost. When we get to construction, that's 80/20. Now, make you aware that under the general authority on these bike grants, I did by February 1st, apply for a Clean Ohio issue two, or Clean Ohio Fund Bike Path Grant. We were told at the time of that coming in that the legislature and the governor had not authorized any money yet, so they didn't know when it was. But I got a letter this week, or late last week, really, saying legislature's now authorized money, the governor signed it, and they will be considering our application along with others, et cetera. So that might help offset that cost later. So I've applied for what available grant we have, but we'll probably have to upfront it anyway. But we're trying to, trying to keep the cost down. Once we go to construction, it's a 20% max.
Fairgrounds?
Fairgrounds, just hard to believe that this summer will be 10 years since we entered out of initial lease. We had a five-year, five-years, a five-year renewal before I coached the fair board and everything. I mean, that's one, that the utilization has sort of peaked and valued on us over the years. It's in the valley right now, not a whole lot of utilization out there. About 50% of them are raking. But I just would, from the committee, either do we just let the lease lapse, or do we go ahead and try to renegotiate? And, you know, I just need a general guidance from the committee on that, proceed one way or the other.
Amy?
Yes.
I know that one time we were talking about paving that, and then we decided not to because the requirements of the city to pave parking lots, is that, where does that stand?
Well, the fair board did not want us to pave it.
Okay, that's what I'm having.
At a particular point in time. We then started to talk, even though it wasn't in our law, about what some of the other alternatives were. Right now, gravel is a porous surface, and therefore, you know, it was causing water runoff, but it was some inconvenience to the parkers there time to time. But we looked at different, these different systems you can build in and plant grass on top of blocks and, or different things to make it look that way. We presented a plan like that, and they said, "Well," they weren't sure yet, they'd let us know, and that's been about three years. So they obviously didn't want to make the long-term commitment to try to put that to a non-porous surface and weren't sure exactly which way to go on it. So that's one of the things that was in the original lease, but the, you know, it was subject to their approval. We said we would pay, I think, pay the cost of it. And of course, right now, we also have the West Union Street project where we want to replace the sidewalk in front of that and make it a five-foot wide sidewalk, and that's going to be expensive, too. So I'm sure there'll be, if we can continue, there'll be some negotiations.
Miss believe for another five-year lease?
If that's what you want, I mean, I can shoot for that, or, you know, it's just, I just thought that rather than just go out and start negotiating with them without ever talking to council, I ought to talk to council first.
Okay. Pajica?
Okay, I was going to say, this is a new issue for me. So we lease the fairgrounds for parking, and then who parks there?
Anybody that's willing to pay the money.
Okay, and then we charge people to pay?
Certainly.
All right, so is this, how much money do we make on this?
That's what I'm saying, there's been peaks and valleys. We've been as little as making $15,000 a year to as high as $45,000. We charge, I think it's about, I can't remember, $55 or $60 per quarter. So it's not one of the most expensive blocks in town. Part of our hope has always been to tie that in a little bit better to the bus system.
Yeah.
So that that can be one of the, can't be a remote parking, but it can be a parking for people living in dormitories or other areas. And I think part of what happened is River Park Towers, when we, when they had to build 120 units, one bedrooms, and such, and our requirement said two units per, two parking spaces per unit, well, they went a bit and built 240 parking spaces, and they have, I think, 124 people living there. So they had, all of a sudden, had an extra 118 parking spaces, and they were out of their mouths. That's a lot closer than the fairgrounds. Of course, they probably wanted more money, too.
Yeah, well, I'm glad.
Convenience is convenience.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned the bus system, because I, someone mentioned to me that they'd been waiting four years, and they still haven't gotten in to the parking structure downtown. So if there were, although we probably don't have the number of people to support it, but you know, if there could be a little shuttle from the, from the fairgrounds into town or something, that would probably make it more.
That's one of the improved routes. I think that the consultant advice on that route will solve the fairgrounds' transportation into town.
Really? How often would they run?
Have to come on May 4th and listen to his presentation. Because all of that's changed from what we're currently doing to the recommendations.
Yeah, so this is probably something that we want to do. I mean, you're just raising it for.
I'm raising it to see, I mean, I don't know with the fair board, once I have not talked, that they may wish to manage it themselves at this stage. I don't know.
Paul?
How much are we leasing?
Don't negotiate it too much in public.
How much are we leasing right now? How much does costing us per year right now?
It's just a percentage of revenue.
Oh, it's a percentage, okay. So it goes up and down there. There's, they're.
Don't give them any ideas, Paul.
No, I'm just asking, unlike the other ones.
That's why I said, let's not negotiate this in public, however you want it or not.
How many parking spots are there?
285.
Do we have a person on site? I'm just curious. How is this managed?
No, we don't.
No, okay.
It's quarterly parking. We run it for the whole quarter, a portion of it.
And then the police go through in ticket cars or something?
Tow trucks, too.
Tow trucks, okay.
Just like every other parking lot in town.
Any other questions? I have no miscellaneous items unless another member of council does. Okay, we are adjourned.